Yeah, I heard it. She's like, you know, stay in the room. You're like, you know, right? You know how people suck down?
That's correct.
And you're in my phone. Yeah. And you're tired.
Before. No, I'm tired of her. You know, she was in there. She's saying, you know.
We're like, we dug out. Yeah.
Oh. That's fine.
That's right. Yeah. I feel a bit. And she's like, yeah. It's really interesting.
It makes it like, how the brain's working.
Yeah. I can't remember. Yeah. I'll just go home. But I'm tired. Yeah. It's just that I'm enjoying myself. I'm tired. I don't know where I'm going. I don't know where I'm going. Okay, it's six o'clock and we now, well, that's Colby's new. So we have forums in all three, planning and zoning and flood board and PACAB. Okay? So this resolution came before planning and zoning and we postponed it and we wanted to hear from the people that had dealt with this for a long time. PACAB, the flood board has asked to join in and I'm going to start off with this. This is the preamble to the Alaska State Constitution that we, I know our board raised our hand and pledged to. The source of government, all political power is inherent in the people. All government originates with the people, is founded upon their will only, and is instituted solely for the good of the people as a whole. Okay?
Thank you, ma'am.
So that's my viewpoint on this process, that we're working towards what's best for the people of Seward as a whole. Okay? So as Chair of Planning and Zoning Commission, I'm going to try to like, you know, cowl on you as you raise your hand or calm you down as you get too excited and those things. But we at the Planning and Zoning postponed this until we heard from you and we have heard, at that meeting, we heard from public comments from part of the ad hoc committee that the council had appointed. We heard from Bob Linville, who is on Zoom with us tonight, and we heard from Carol Griswold, who is also on that ad hoc committee. And since then, we've got comments that were sent to us from Mr. Joffa, who's on PACAB but was also on that committee, appointed by the council to do the work. And then pandemic hit and I think it kind of stalled. No, it didn't stall.
We twilighted.
You what?
We twilighted.
You twilighted. Okay. We twilighted. All right. So we're back on it and now the first step is a preliminary right-of-way acquisition plan, which I spoke to the borough planner today, Mr. Huff. And an acquisition plan was the first step and then they, prior to the preliminary plan, they would need to get somehow this land or signatures from the people who own the land and to move forward. And there have been some other questions. So I could keep going, but I'd like to hear why, from the planning commission, any statements you had as to why you voted to postpone this and we did those answers. That's Annie.
I believe we were supposed to postpone for more information, couldn't we?
Yep.
Would you like confirmation from other bodies and both public?
Yes. Right. So we do have, the PACAB, we did it from Mr. Joffa from talking points today by email. And is there anyone other than Mr. Joffa that's on PACAB that wanted to have any of those talking points or other ones? Aldi?
I guess I just think that it's, seems like it's overwhelmingly, the citizens of Seward don't want to move forward with this and I think that what you just stated at the beginning of this is something that needs to be thought about because everyone that I've heard from or talked to doesn't want to move forward with the current proposal.
A shortened runway and go away with our longer runway.
Correct.
Or, yeah. Linda? And I hope you don't mind me calling anybody by their names.
No, that's, that's, and I was on that airport committee as well. And so my, I agree with what Colby is and what you started out with. And in light of the fact that there's all this new infrastructure money that we're possible without, I think we should try to put the brakes on the whole thing and try and have it worked out again because this isn't what the city of Seward, people in the city of Seward want. It isn't. And I, so that's what I have to say.
Go ahead.
I have more of a question as far as moving forward. If, if the city wants to, in essence, block the project by not approving this right-of-way plan, do they have a path around us or is this a stalemate of limitations?
Well, they, they can go around us. We've been told that there's a 90-day window from some point. Some said it was from the first ask, some said it's from when this came to the city's resolution for the preliminary plan. Then they can, they can go all the way to eminent domain and just take the property for people's. So the other thing-
Excuse me, they can't eminent domain if it was needed before state of.
Okay. Try to flag me down if I'm not calling you so we can keep it kind of orderly. Hi, hi. And so the other item that has been mentioned is that the city could look towards the Army Corps of Engineers, but that the Army Corps of Engineers needs to be asked. And I'm not sure if anyone here knows if the Army Corps of Engineers has been asked to assist with this project. And I will call on our city manager, who raised your hands, Jan.
Thank you. I'll assume so. So I'm going to turn to also Norm, Regis, for historical information. So the city, it is not an Army Corps of Engineer project and it's not the city's airport either. So that's, you know, the delineation, it's not ours. What we're being asked about is the right-of-way, not the project. So the project is DOT's project, is not the city's project, you're dealing with right-of-way. So, and you're correct, DOT can take action without us, without the city, the boards, anything. But again, that, tonight's topic is the right-of-way, not the project. There was mentioned before about the city taking the airport. The city council has already said, no, we do not want the airport. We can't afford the airport is what it comes down to. So I just want to weigh on that. I don't know if Norm has, okay.
So one follow-up, Jan, after you or Norm, when did the 90-day window start that they will take action, whether we do?
Honestly, I think you'd have to ask them. I'm not quite sure of when the 90-day starts.
Okay. All right. Okay. So anybody else have any ideas on Linda?
Just to follow up on, on all of that, all of those decisions were made prior to this big infrastructure bill and money from the Fed. So again, I feel like the decisions that were made were made based on a different knowledge about a different level of available funding. And I think the whole thing needs to be revisited because council, I mean, maybe there's a way to get the funding for the airport that the city would need to have the airport. Maybe that's something now that would be possible when it wasn't possible before. So that's, Phil, come on.
Bruce?
Chair Apple. I don't, I'm not quite sure how to sort out all the things I have to say. I try to, of course, it didn't help that I left the house without my talking points, but I think I remember them. And I would have to agree with our manager that this is not a meeting and we're not at a stage actually talking about the project itself. This is a right-of-way issue. The right-of-way, how you come away from it, the right-of-way decision, could affect the viability of the project. If you, if planning and zoning denies this resolution and the state, and I see we have two state representatives part of this meeting, if the state decides to take other actions, I think there's political fallout from that. So whether they would move forward with that, that would be a very unpleasant thing for the current administration. Even though DOT is a bureaucracy that extends beyond administrations, it would still be an uncomfortable place for DOT to be in. So whether at that point they would say, boy, this is a hornet's nest, we don't want to mess with Seward and drop it. And then, and then where do we go from there? Linda is correct in, we're all correct, none of us like this project. There is a better project. The project that DOT is proposing is not in the long-term best interest of Seward. It wasn't to begin with, it's still not. It's what's on the table today. So how do we get to where we want to, where, how do we get the airport that we want and deserve? I think that's really where we're at. And I think you've got to decide what tactic you want to use to get there. Obstructionism is one tactic. That's essentially what you're talking about, obstructing this project. But what do you build in the ashes of that? And how do you build it back? Yeah, there's a lot of money out there, but there's no guarantee that it's going to come here. Yes, Senator Sullivan stood out on the runway and said, what you want is doable. There are problems though and Stephanie and the flood board are clear in their neck deep and all, no pun intended, in the, in the problems of the flood plan. And to get that changed, and I believe it can get changed, is not an easy thing. And to get the Corps of Engineers involved is a five to 10-year project. Now, I don't know if I'm going to be viable in five to 10 years, but this town will be. And so looking forward to that, maybe that is the way to go. So how do you get there? I, I don't mean to be cavalier about this, but I, I spend a lot of time thinking about it and I stopped by, a friend of mine, Willard Dunn Scrage, today and said, Willard, what would you do? And I ran this by his son just to check and see. Get the best deal you can and move on. So maybe taking what DOT is proposing is a solution with caveat. And there's, there needs to be some real consideration. Citizen Griswold has certainly brought a lot of things to the board that need to be considered. So what would be the end result if they built the current runway, they throw our money away on an unneeded vault cap that later that they would have to rebuild later if they could? So that's money down the drain. Again, no pun intended, but that's, that's what it would be, so what? We would have one partially improved runway in the short term while we work towards the long term and all this money. That's it in a nutshell. I, I think it's a strategic decision that you're going to have to make tonight. Well, maybe not tonight. It buys it.
Yeah. No, no binding decisions are going to be made tonight as this is, I get, information gathering work session. And yes, it is on this right-of-way acquisition preliminary plan. But along with that comes what is the role of people. And I think we pretty much, everybody knows this project, which is not the topic tonight, is not the role of people, but this is the first step towards that project. So we will talk about the project. The one point that I think is part of the right-of-way acquisition is the access to the beach areas and to the properties on the other side of the runway, that that cannot be taken away. There has to be some way that can be included in this preliminary plan. So, yes, Tom?
Just segue on because that's actually what I came into this room thinking that for part of, since this is a public meeting, this is going to be an opportunity for people to, you know, restate their disagreement with the project, which isn't what we're dealing with tonight, but it is an opportunity for those things to be expressed again, which then goes up to the city council that are, probably most of our watching this. But, you know, the city council's the group that has to decide how to move, you know, what strategy we're going to use for or against the project. That isn't this board's job. But what you just said is the one thing that I came up with that as far as if DOT picks up these pieces of property and we're doing a replat and we're looking at, okay, if they replat it, what things do we want to occur for that replat? And the one, the big thing that I came up with was exactly what you said, right-of-way to the other parts of the beach, you know, down that area. I don't know if there's other areas and I, I look for anybody else to make comments on what other areas we should be looking at for the replat. Based on the fact that these properties are acquired and it needs to be replatted, but not about the project itself.
We don't know what the future is going to hold for this community or its needs, but tying it to the current economic program that the city has taken is unsustainable for the long term and we all recognize it. Seward has the most northern ice-free, deep-water port in North America. We don't have the facilities nor will we have the facilities to properly accommodate the size of ships that are becoming in. Not knowing what this part of the area of the city is going to be involved in any future needs, I'd hate to put a restriction on it that would hinder any type of future environmental or economic development.
So you're speaking of the south and primarily of this project?
I'm talking from the shoreline up to the three bridges.
Okay. That whole area?
Yeah. The whole area.
But keeping in mind an airport?
Yes, keeping in mind an airport, absolutely. We need one. It's all part of the major infrastructure.
Okay. So, and yes, Stephanie?
I do have a very short presentation that might bring some people up to date on to, as to where we are, how we got here. Where we, meaning why we're sitting here reviewing the right-of-way plan.
Re-doing it, re-discussing it?
Reviewing it.
Oh, reviewing. Okay.
So, for those of you who don't know me, Stephanie Preston with the Flood Service Area. I did, the Flood Service Area has served on the stakeholder work group that DOT formed and I have been a part of that since 2015. I was also the non-voting staff member for the ad hoc committee that the city council formed. So I just wanted to give you a brief project timeline of where we're at with right-of-way acquisitions and permitting. So I'm a very visual person, I love my maps, so I kind of bring lots of pictures to look So photo from 1950 with the runway and these blue lines will continue throughout the photos that show Resurrection River and the 1950 channels. So Resurrection River began its southern migration in 1986 flood record. This is from '73 and '76. And you can see in '76, there's already some channels starting to form through what is now a solar control property. The southern migration continued in the 1995 and 2006 flood events. This is just prior to the '86 event. And this is following the 1995 event. You can see how that southerly flow has carved through the vegetation there. In the 2006 and the 2012 events, a long runway substrate with underlined damage was caused to the abatement and the pavement. And in 2014, DOT conducted testing to place a weight restriction on the runway. This is imagery from last summer showing you what it looks like now. So DOT began the planning for the airport improvements in 2014 and they formed a stakeholder work group that included local airport, airport users and local government. That stakeholder group had four meetings between 2014 and '17 and there were four public meetings held between 2014 and '19. DOT began with eight scenarios, five of those were eliminated early on in the feasibility phase, and a sixth alternative was eliminated after discussion with FAA. FAA is the primary funding source of the airport project. So alternative 3.0 was to offset, construct a 4,000-foot-long runway, runway 1634, so Basically, it was an offset from 1634, which is our short runway, and was extended 4,000 feet in length. Based on the forecasted use of the air quarry over the next decade and the conversations with FAA, that alternative was eliminated because the current and forecast demand did not justify the use of FAA funds to lengthen the runway beyond 3,300 feet, which is the design for two aircraft. The future airport layout plan will accommodate a 4,000-foot-long runway. FAA just won't fund it. In 2017, a scoping request was sent to the regulatory agents, agencies and a teleconference was held. The final two alternatives were commented on by those agencies in February, March of This is our FEMA flood hazard map. Due to a presidential executive order for federal flood risk management, any development that utilizes federal funding must be built two feet above the base flood elevation or the base flood level. This project will be funded 95% by Federal Aviation Administration and as such, the infrastructure will need to have two feet of freeboard. That's basically above those red lines you see there that are the base flood elevation. Much of the long runway, as you can see, is within the FEMA map floodway. Those are the black hash marks that you can see crossing the runway. The flood plain is made up of the floodway and the flood fringe. The floodway is the part of the river where the waters will be the deepest and fastest during the flood event and it's a highly dangerous part of the flood plain where development regulations are the strictest. The green areas outside of the hash mark is the flood fringe and those are areas where development is allowed. So federal regulations within the floodway prohibit encroachment, including placing fill. And because the floodway crosses the long runway 1331, the runway cannot be elevated without placing fill and the regulatory floodway. The H&amp;H study showed that raising the main runway to two feet above the base flood elevation as required in order to use federal funding could cause floodwater levels to increase by about just four feet in places and cause the area of potential flooding to expand significantly across the flood plain towards the east.
Okay. I'm just going to ask a few questions.
Sure.
Stephanie, when did dredging in the river system from the bridge to the bay stop? It used to get dredged often on. So when did that stop?
Yeah. The flood board has had a couple of different work sessions talking about Resurrection River mitigation. And basically, we have dredged a section of the channel pretty near where you see resurrection is basically this area here. And that was last completed, I believe, following the 2006 event. And there is a mitigation plan in place that requires the city and the borough to both chipping, to making that dredging. That has not been done, I believe, since, I think, 2007 or something like that. Can I answer your question?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm actually want to know farther back than that, sometime prior to the fishing game and the new, you know, salmon catch and ask, leave.
It was the early 70s, you're thinking. They were giving money every year, DOT, they were piling it up and that first flood event turned the river towards the airport. Our first slide kind of shows that. And to raise the runway, all it would do is put it back in its original channel.
The 1986 flood?
The 1986 flood started to eat this giant pile that had, a lot of the pilots remember. And it kept eating it away and it just turned the whole river right to the airport.
And if I'm correct, the river used to flow more to the east.
You can see the old river and now, I mean, to put it back in its old spot would be very easy to do.
Because Stephanie in comments said that if we build the runway up to above two feet above floodway, that it would make the river move to east. Well, that's where it was.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
And there's nothing else over there that I'm aware of.
There's some private properties in there.
Private properties, as is the private properties around this project.
Yeah, there's no access to them.
Yeah.
Which is eight and a half feet lower than it was on March 23rd, '64.
It's eight and a half feet lower.
Lower.
Yeah, the old river channel is lower.
On March 23rd, 1964, that's the closest survey I can find on it.
Okay. And so the river system to the east is that much lower than it was in '64?
Yes, that whole plain, this whole area here has dropped.
Because it moved to the left.
Correct.
The water's run out more.
Yes, that's one reason. Side around Allison's so devastating.
Okay.
And currently, the airport is the low spot-
Yeah.
-in our flood plain across the river delta. So Resurrection River is going to continue to carve a path in that direction over the next, you know, couple decades until we have another event that swings it over to the other side. These braided systems, they deposit material, change channels, build a positive amount of material on one side and then they'll swing over to the other. And right now, what we have is a swing towards the south, which is impacting the long runway.
Yes.
I have a question for Stephanie then. In your opinion, since DOT is saying that mitigation and dredging of the river is not in their plans at all, what's to keep the river from continuing to move and infringe upon this new project? Why is that?
Nothing. Nothing. So they're going to harbor the new runway. Is my mic charged?
Yeah, go ahead.
What, what we have looked at seriously in my letters, I suggested that the impact of allowing the river to continue its westward movement, even though DOT will harbor the new runway, will be to allow that water to move closer and closer to our harbor development. And as it moves that way, it's going to very possibly impact our harbor development. The new barge extension, the barge dock extension, as well as DOT's runway will move air traffic closer and closer to tour boats or anything else. There's some real negatives, allowing the 1331 runway to disintegrate. That's what everyone is predicting, is it will disintegrate and the river will continue its meander to the, to the west. Now, what can be done? There's no limit to what can be done. Is the will and the money there? Couple, Board number, the CAT has alluded to or mentioned the new infrastructure money. The money may be there. Is the will there? I'm not sure. You go to Japan, whole rivers are encased in concrete. They didn't take any chances. You know, maybe that's not what we want to see, but, you know, you can do anything. What is in the best interest of Seward and how do you get there?
Well, I, I know that Carol told, could we go back, Stephanie, to the flood plain map, one way, the floodway down? It's right underneath the top of me.
I'm going to share it on the screen so everybody online can see this flow.
And then could you expand it? And then could you zoom in? And then could you zoom in? So I wanted the one with the floodway hatches. So it looks to me, and I talked to Stephanie about this, it's miraculous that the floodway that hatched up ends. It just ends. So anybody looking at that can tell that the data is incomplete. And it looks to me like the new runway will also be in this dangerous floodway that is right now their excuse for not addressing the long runway. The floodway does not end where the data ends. So that whole premise is false.
If you'd like to explain, I did look up the flood shirt study after our conversation. I have additional information on that.
Sure.
So the floodway is a riverine floodway, so that's where the river is expected to be the highest and fastest. The area of green, which is the coastal AE zone, is the area where coastal wave runoff is expected to be up to three feet. And the coastal velocity zone, which is the VE zone down there at the bottom in pink, is where waves will be over three feet. So the floodway doesn't miraculously end, it just becomes coastal velocity zone with smaller wave runoff.
The tide doesn't get up quite that high. I just don't trust that data. It's almost too coincidental to be valid. I really don't. And it doesn't extend down on the right side of the long runway, doesn't include the river?
Yeah, that was modeled, and what it is, is it's the wave runoff, and that's why they stopped the riverine floodway at that point in time is because the
I don't think the waves get up that much. Now, even on a super boon high tide, the waves, the tide is Anyway, I'm not a hydrologist.
I'm saying coastal storm surge. So when we have coastal storms coming up, the waves, that's up to three feet tall in the velocity zone, the pink zone, and it's under three feet tall up to the floodway.
Well, thank you, but I am still very suspicious of that data. Okay, while we have this map up, could you zoom out a little so that we could see the access area that we need to make sure we address, and since it's part of the preliminary plat? So can you kind of guide us across what, where that possibly could be for access to the properties that are to the east? Is that right, Carol? Well, Steve Lear's property or the Lear Enterprise LLC right there, he owns part of the beach, yeah? And DOT's handout said that they are not required to provide access. They can landlocked the parcels, which I'm questioning why they can do that. But how can we get, how can he get, and the people that he allows to use his property, how can he get the rest of his property? And how can we, the public, get to the rest of the tidallands that is still owned by the city?
Well, there's no current legal access to it right now, that property. It is already in progress. This is railroad property, and this is state property, so there is no current legal access.
At the end of the, I mean, you know, so coming down that road, that's airport property? Or that runway, or whatever? Click on the airport property, Stephanie. Okay, so he has no legal right to go down, or cut over to his property? Has his airport property, and you can't go on airport property?
Unless you had a boat, maybe?
No, I mean, not from the, not from the bay. I'm saying coming into the airport, driving on the pavement, and then parking and walking over to the northwest corner of his property.
Yeah, you're crossing state, DOT.
So DOT does not have to give access? They can landlock properties?
I think it's already on
Right, but it
Cindy, the states landlocked properties before, all over this
No, I understand, it's just not what's in the best
And it fits best benefit of the people.
And so I just don't want to continue that practice. I'm asking the state not to continue that practice.
I think we should leave that entire beachfront, that whole front, just as undeveloped as possible, in perpetuity, because it is the coastline. There's a tremendous amount of activity there of wildlife.
I see you're gonna come to wildlife.
Boy, yeah. So I'm saying, this is not the only bay in the sticky that you're in, D.
Okay, Stephanie, you were gonna continue?
So I was gonna move on there, talking about the herd project, just because I know we're not, we're just talking about the right-of-way tonight, but it seems like understanding what DOT is proposing might be helpful for some people who haven't attended some of our work sessions on this. So DOT selected their preferred alternative in 2017. They completed their environmental assessment, and FAA signed a finding of no significant impact in March of 2020. So DOT proposes to offset and construct a 3,300-foot-long runway, 1634. They're going to elevate it two feet above the base flood elevation. The threshold is they shift it to the north to avoid the coastal velocity zone impacts, and then widen it to 75 feet.
Red.
So the
The red part is
Runways and, sorry, the runway safety areas in yellow. The pavement limits are in red, and the fill limits are in blue, and it's not as kind of a safety zone out there in the water, but it's the one that's really close around the, the yellow, right there. Like, it's like, if this blue, not this blue, well, yeah.
So they're gonna fill the pond on the north end?
The
No.
The pond on the north end, no, they're not. And one of the things that DOT has said, they're looking into, currently, they're planning a clearing and grabbing around the pond, but they're gonna look into leaving vegetation around the pond based on public comment.
So
And then the civil air control property, they will be doing selective clearing of basically the very tallest of trees in that area. So they will be pulling the pavement and the runway lighting off of the long runway 1331. The embankment will remain, they'll be topping it with brass, so it doesn't look like a runway from up above. And they will be closing taxiway A, that's the cross taxiway between the two existing runways. That will be removed, and the exfil will be opened up again. The pavement on runway 16 and 34 will be removed, and the embankment will be re-rated for drainage. They'll be relocating taxiways B. I'm sorry, my pointer doesn't work very well, maybe one of these. They'll be relocating taxiway B and extending and reconfiguring taxiways C and F, and they will remove taxiways A, B, and E. They'll be reconstructing portions of the existing paved apron and resurfacing the remainder of it. They'll be constructing gravel pads and installing new lighted wind cone, secondary lighted wind cone, gravel pads, and foundations for a precision approach path indicator, and relocating the automated service observation system. They'll be constructing a new electrical equipment building and putting in underground power telecom lines from a local utility pool to those new buildings and new weather observation system. They'll be constructing drainage ditching and drainage features, and they'll install property fencing. And they'll be installing electrical service for the precision approach. And then they'll be selectively clearing and grabbing the vegetated, to clear the airspace all that we just discussed.
Will they continue to lease sites for hangar construction?
It's not a question I ask DOT. We do have DOT on. If you'd like them to answer the question, they can send me a paper and talk to you now.
I'm gonna ask you a question.
Go ahead.
So I've been flying out of this airport for 40 years, and you go to take off, there's no wind. You take off, and all of a sudden, you have a horrible crosswind. We have, I mean, it's, safety is like, if you don't have a second choice, I mean, there's a huge safety risk not having the two runways. It's like, everybody that's designed this thing, not one of them's a pilot, they don't understand what we need as for an airport. They didn't put those two runways in there just for fun. It's because when we have a crosswind, we need a second choice.
So they did do a weather analysis, you know, using the native weather observations assembly, and the 1634, I believe, provided like 97 percent
I think you need to be careful taking that for
Yeah, you need to ask the pilots.
You know, you're, you're in many with DOT, and many local pilots feel that that is incorrect, and not just a little incorrect.
I mean, it's not even close.
There's an old adage about a pilot can always decide when to take off, but he can't decide when to land. He's gotta land.
So at this point in time, DOT is currently working on the right-of-way acquisitions and permitting. So the city floodplain development permit has been submitted. The flood board will be reviewing that for local comment to regulatory agencies in our September 13 meeting. The Army Corps of Engineers individual permit will be reviewed by the Corps. They will most likely require a consular litigation for the filling of any floodlands or tidallands. There is a fish and game Title 16 Fish Habitat permit. The Department of Environmental Conservation has a water quality certificate as well as a pollutant discharge elimination system. There will be a State Department of Natural Resources temporary water use authorization and a state VNR land use permit. They'll also be coordinating with U.S. Fisher Wildlife Service for avoiding land disturbance during migratory bird and active bulk navel nets.
Look, it sounds like they've just made their mind up. We don't really get any kind of choices.
Well, the alternative was selected in 2017. They have a sense to listen to the community, but they're not always gonna be able to do exactly what you like.
Well, it's just not the best for us.
Now, for a large portion of that from 2017 to today, it's been the pandemic, and people have been hiatus or sunset or whatever. So I, and not, not everyone in this room was able to continue to work from home or have Zoom or all that, which was when we could have given more public input into it. And this is now the public input that we want to give. And I know that the right-of-way acquisition preliminary plat is one step, but I'm, I mean, are we just, are our hands just tied, and it doesn't matter what, the people and the pilots and the economic development and the safety and the wellness, the health of the people, the animals, the land? It's like that doesn't matter right now, which is sad.
We get 10 Lear jets a year come into this, the short, what they want to do, not one Lear jet will ever, ever be able to come in and land. And they spend a huge amount of money in this town.
So I, I'm, we can, we can, okay, there's nothing we can do now. I mean, eventually, maybe we can dredge to the east and let the, get the water going back to the east and get it away. And if they, and if we get infrastructure money, put the long runway back in, you know, you can get permits, and you can dredge around the cycle of the fish. It's doable, but it doesn't sound like
It's DOT's property, though.
Anything we can do now.
It's DOT's property.
Where the river is?
Well, I mean, the airport is theirs.
Right, right.
I don't know how we get to the point where we get to put the other runway back.
Yeah, you take it out, and it'll never come back. And somebody will be killed
I'm not sure I agree, I'm not sure I agree with that link. I would say it's gone for now. Never, that's a long
Carol?
Getting back to the plat?
Yes.
Could someone on funding and zoning address Title VII public property? I don't know if you got my latest comment about that. It seems like we skipped that step. We are giving away a little bit over 25 acres of public property, and there hasn't been a required public hearing and notice for that. The city has just decided, yes, we'll give you 25 acres of city-owned property. But Title VII requires that there be public input into that decision, and I think we've skipped that step. So could someone explain why from that
Is that parcel five, Carol?
Pardon me?
Is that parcel five?
Parcel five.
The, this is preliminary, and between preliminary and final is when the transfer of property takes place.
So that public
So if that, there should be a public meeting through the council to get rid of municipal lands.
Correct, correct. Thank you, sir.
Chair, Chairman?
Yes.
I may be confused, but I understood DOT to suggest that they could skip that coming back, sort of, after getting borough approved.
Right, it doesn't come back to the city, but between the preliminary plat going to the Borough Planning Commission, and then it coming back as final, that process has to be done. They have to acquire the property that they, that they
Who would have that ready, the borough?
The DOT has to acquire the property of that plat then. So if it's municipal, according to Title VII, this, according to Title VII, it would have to go to a public process. Yes, Stephanie?
So I did have that opportunity to talk to Scott Huff over at the Borough thing, and he explained that the preliminary plat is originally approved. The Borough Planning Commission approves the preliminary plat, and documentation is submitted by, submitted with the preliminary plat that shows the recommendations of the advisory planning commission within the located city. Then DOT will complete appraisals of the properties that they're looking to acquire. Then they contact landlords and begin negotiations of the right-of-way parcels, and that is when the city council would weigh in on the disposition of the parcel. Once those acquisitions have been finalized, then they submit for a final plat approval. That is my understanding of that, and that's where we are.
And they're trying to start this next year?
They've got a lot of permits and a lot of things to work through, but I think that they're hoping to get all the permits in place and put this out for bid for construction during next summer.
So whose property is the, it's the city's and Lear's and the state-owned property that we'd like to have access across? Is that correct? All three?
Civil air control property is parcel one up here.
Right, I'm talking about the access we want along the beach. Is, parcel five is city, and then some of it is already DOT, and that's
I believe it's VNR. We don't have all of the tidallands that we did, but I believe that that's VNR.
VNR, that we want to keep access open to the other properties, at least a walking path to the other properties to the east. So that would come through either when we have the public meetings on the city transfer of public property, and then
Heck, I think that's, I think that's a good point. Now, is, is in our preliminary plat to request a public access
Loan?
Because, you know, when it's, once it's been purchased, all of it is DOT land. So where that path goes across there would have to do with, you know, how they do the runway, where they can say, you know, yeah, where that path would go across would be determined in the, in the overall plan of the runway. Does it happen in the existing DOT property, or does it happen down in the, I mean, parcel five is already in the floodplain?
Well, most of the beach where people walk is.
Yeah, but beach, right, I mean, you know, the beach area is right there, you know, where parcel four is in the south.
And Chair David Haddick, flood board member, has raised
Go ahead, David.
One of the biggest things that I think everybody's forgetting about, we are under, it's under ANFA, the airline service. I'm thinking that they will I'm thinking that they will chain link everything, you know, like both airports, you know, go to Anchorage and go through their airports to do a pathway. I think definitely everybody's forgetting about the noise coming from them. They're looking for secure and everything else. So I think that's probably the, probably why they're not looking at everything being fenced up and sealed. Just my opinion.
And so that acquisition of that city parcel is not for development. It's for protecting airspace to the approaches. And then that would be, you know, part of the future longer four thousand foot airport layout plan if there was funding to extend that runway to four thousand feet. And then the final plat is completed once the project has been done.
Could I clarify the tightlands, please?
Yes.
So I talked to DNR because I was wondering, is parcel five city-owned or DNR-owned? And they did a little research and they deeded Alaska State Tightlands one seventy-four. That's what's to the right of parcel five. They heated this huge upper head of the bay tightlands to the city. So those are all city tightlands across here.
So that is not one of the parcels that they are plating, that lower?
Lot five is not shown on our parcel here, but it's basically out here.
Yeah.
Oh.
And Carol's saying that DNR deeded the tightlands across here to the city. So I think a huge chunk of this is what she's saying in the city.
But in their planning, they could actually put access to that area would not necessarily have to go to the south. It could go to the north and down the east side. I mean, if you say, no, you know, you need to provide access, we're just asking to provide access. The access could come in from a different direction.
Well, you'd be on airport property.
Well, we're asking for access, for property. We're asking for an access. And it really is a matter of where they put their fences. I mean, the airport property is going way over there, but there are fences there. So you still could provide access. I mean, if we just put it in that we want to see access provided to these areas and it's private property there.
So why are they putting fences up? That's my question.
That's a standard ever since.
Oh, and security issues. Yeah, but there's no other, I mean, we got a whole bunch of airports not fenced.
Well, they probably have them rebuilt.
So even the ones that could be rebuilt don't have fences. You can go and do it all over other places. They've got brand new runway, no fences.
Well, and the, and the Anchorage Airport, there's fence, but there's also an access on the beach.
You can walk right on to the Lake Wood airstrip.
Yes.
The people walk along that every day.
Down here.
Yes, go ahead.
So I guess my question is, is that something that's reasonable and feasible at this stage for planning and zoning to request? Can you go back to DOT and say, or can you approve it with provisions? Or how would that, how does that look moving forward? Norm?
Madam Jim, so I know in one of Carol's emails you talk about mitigation. You can talk about mitigation to have public access in front of all that as part of the mitigation processes, transferring the land back from the city. Make sure they do a path or a fence along that way. I mean, they do it right along the Anchorage Airport. Usually they get the fence right there and they have all that left park there and they could do the same thing there.
Right.
But there's a mitigation process to go take land and give something back.
Okay, okay, let's go.
I think at this point.
Also think about the Juneau Airport, huge airport in Nashville, its fence. But right next to the fence is a beautiful path with interpretive signs about the wildlife and the birds. And the public has access to that, to the wetlands.
Yes, to that.
I'm actually going to ask your question, probably Bruce. But the airports that I've been involved in that are FAA-funded, there's a difference. There's FAA-funded airports and then there's DOT-funded airports and then there's both. The FAA ones, I've always understood, they require the fencing when they're the sole FAA ones. So when it's the others, fencing is not required. That's been my understanding. So this is, could be why this is an FAA-funded airport. So this is why requiring fencing.
So if, is in fact a fencing, if this is an FAA project and if the fencing then is required, it's very possible that they're going to block access to the north with fencing. Because that will be pretty much runway until they get to lease.
I'm just saying it could be the same thing. When you ask them and you go like, okay, now the people that are the engineers that are designing it, we're saying, we need access. I'm just saying the access could go either direction. We just ask for access.
Or both.
It could go both, absolutely. I'm not the one that got all the knowledge, draw the lines on the paper.
So I'm going to have a fence going down so nobody can use the pond? This is what I'm hearing.
It's my understanding that the pond is not going to be fenced. So the department, the fire department continues to have access to the dry fire hydrants that's out there?
Okay, this will be coming back to the planning and zoning commission. So I want to make sure that the members of the planning and zoning commission that are here get to ask any additional questions to help us through that next step.
I'm sorry, I just, I'd just like to ask the public. I mean, we, we basically from us looking at this project for by doing, by giving the preliminary replat, the only thing that I've heard that at this point in time we should attack for that is to request access to the, you know, the wet diaphragm, private property. Is there anything else anybody's thinking about that we should be questioning?
Carol?
I'm just really curious why FAA isn't requiring fire hydrants? And, and nobody seems to be really familiar with that dry pond setup. I'm not sure what it's called, but it's a pipe that goes into the pond so tanker trucks can refill. But what a primitive system. So why doesn't FAA require fire hydrant protection at the airports?
You would hope so, if it's their project.
They, they don't want to do it.
I've flown all over Alaska to FAA airports. They don't have fences, they don't have fire hydrants.
But they're happy to clear every stream and put fences up. It seems, seems like this is very valuable infrastructure and we should require that they help detect it.
Do not take a close look at Germany, okay? They've changed their coastline around remarkably over the past two hundred years. Everything they got to come re-channel now.
So what I'm hearing, number one is access. And other possible questions is would be, how are you going to mitigate fire risk? There was some talk about subdivisions and wouldn't subdivisions require utilities? But according to the definitions and of the subdivision, unless they are going to lease, it doesn't look like that's going to be a subdivision, so.
Well, Madam Chair, it's a re-subdivision. And of this magnitude incorporating this many parcels and in changing the lotlines, I can't imagine that this would not be subject to development requirements. You already have commercial operations on the property. Certainly there's a need for fully utilities. And I haven't seen any, any discussion really or anything on paper regarding the extension of utility. Just can anybody?
DOT's paper states that the only additional utilities they're going to provide are some lighting. And that electric has some, something.
Chair, my, thirty-one of my discussions with DOT, there was some confusion on DOT part about what utilities they were going to extend. They did clarify that to me in a letter that I provided to the city. That they, that what you said is correct, only the airport's lighting when they're going to extend. But frankly, I, I would agree that a redevelopment of this size and the fact that the city's in a negotiating position with their parcel, a utility buildup should be required. And if it costs money, it's a fifty million dollar project. They're already throwing money down the drain on a bulkhead that's, you know, going to give up a hundred acres of ground. For them, for them to do a utility buildup.
I was told they don't care what Seward wants to do, they're going to do it anyway.
Well, I'm glad somebody brought this up because that was something that was bothering me as well. How can it be a functioning airport when it's all said and done if all they've done is light up the runway?
Good point.
Okay, so, I guess.
One other thing, Chair. It's important to understand for planning zoning that one of the things that our advisory board looked at was the, the commercial impact of this airport. And many of us in this room have been here for a period of time where we see this airport as a sleepy little airport. That's not the way it always was. You can sit and look across from City Hall at a bureau of a vibrant aviation community. Aviation Alaska started in Seward. And the future of Seward as a high street harbor, as a defense zone, a shipyard that's growing, requires a major airport. And what DOT is proposing is not a major airport. Forty-two hundred feet is closer. Forty-two hundred feet will bring Herks, one thirty-fives, other military aircraft that would be desirable to have in here. The Coast Guard generally flies their commander around on a Gold Spring aircraft. That won't fly in here. He'll have to convert for like Secretary of Defense just recently in a smaller airplane. No big deal. Why should he? If we can get the longer runway, our commercial interests in the city of Seward are much better served.
Norm, did you have your hand up?
I did not.
Oh, okay. Stephanie?
At one point in time, DOT did let us know that if the community wanted to build out the longer runway and funded, that they would be willing to work with us on that.
Right, and as our city manager stated, and I spoke to the mayor today, and she stated, the city does not have any desire to own this airport.
It wasn't, I'm not talking about ownership, just wanting to build out an additional seven hundred feet.
Yeah, but still on the short runway.
But on the one that they've been planning to put in the new one, is there about a hundred extra feet anywhere?
The airport, airport layout plan includes an additional.
We're just not going to pay it.
So we, we apply for some of this infrastructure money and eventually we may have forty-two hundred feet?
Bigger planes need the longer runway angle.
Right.
For a short runway, because of the crosswind, they have to.
Not an acceptable answer.
I can't, I am so tired of hearing this misconception that that's, that this crosswind, ninety percent of the time, the wind blows north-south. That's why that runway was put in was so that we can get in and out of there with our little planes. We don't, thirteen thirty-one is not used hardly ever. It's, everybody uses the one with the predominant wind, north-south, sixteen thirty-four. And that's a fact, go out there and watch.
I actually went off the long runway forever.
Well.
Personal choice.
When commercial aircraft flew in here regularly, they landed on thirteen thirty-one.
Because it's longer.
Exactly.
Right, I understand.
Exactly.
But don't say it's because of the crosswind, okay?
Well, it has a part of it.
All right, I'm going to calm this down and go, yes.
So again, if I can just bring it back to what's coming back before your commission is this resolution, right? And if I'm looking at the resolution, the, the one that was provided is on the way down. What, if, if you decide to pass this resolution, section one just says that you're recommending approval of the replat. There's no language in here or there's no room to say with these provisions. And what I'm wondering is, is that even possible? I mean, you're talking about asking about public access and about extending utilities. But with what you have before you, it doesn't seem like that's something, you're not being asked to comment. It's just a yes or no.
We are, we get to change.
You do, okay, so.
Absolutely, that's what we do.
All right, so my question then is, how do we, like, we're, this, this work session is supposed to be able to help you guys as you go into your next meeting. So how would we change the language of this resolution in order to, to make it reflectable to the public?
Laura, let me just ask the question that I had right before you said that. Courtney, who wrote the resolution?
Yeah, I wrote this.
You wrote the resolution. Courtney's been here, what, three months, Courtney? So what we need, what we need.
You're bad.
Yeah, so in, no poor reflection on you at all, Courtney, is that you were tasked with writing something without this whole history behind you. And so I'm going to ask the city manager or city clerk that we get, I mean, yes, we had a resolution that was before us. This is not the resolution that was before us. And I think the title may be the same, so I don't know if that's, if we can change the whole resolution when it comes before us the next time? Jeanette?
So what you have on your previous meeting is what you have to deal with at your meeting, so.
Well, so we could say we don't want it at all, let's start over.
Yeah, what you could do is, you still have to deal with it and Brendan walked through the procedural part, but you still have to deal with that. You made a, I'm pretty sure, I'm just going to say, I think you made a motion, you can clarify that, to, to adopt it, to accept it, however you did it. And then therefore you have a pending motion to adopt that resolution. You're going to have to deal with that motion, but you could also do a substitute resolution.
Did we then, we had, well, according to the city clerk, I don't know if I'm. We had to make a motion to even discuss it.
Correct, that's absolutely correct.
To even discuss it.
She's absolutely correct.
That's not the way the Borough Planning Commission does. We get to discuss it before, I mean, the staff report's made and questions can be.
They have, they use Masons and we have Roberts, different forms.
So we, we had to make that motion. We were forced to make that motion to accept it. And then we made the motion to postpone it until brought back by staff, I think was the word. But after this more information was gathered.
So that is the correct procedure, absolutely correct. That's what we do at the council too. So you do have to deal with your pending motion, which is to adopt that other resolution. What you can do, then you can.
Vote it down, we can vote now.
You can vote it down or you can just do another motion to substitute it out. There's, we could, Brendan can script that out for you, how to do that. And, but you don't have to adopt the other resolutions, what I'm trying to say, if you want to do the new one, that's fine.
I'd like a, a resolution that's meatier and allows, I'm thinking more of a, a conditional use permit where we can put some, or we can ask for some give and take, like the mitigation with the access and the property and stuff. And I don't know how we put that in here. Jeanette?
I, I'm not quite sure. The one thing I know you can't do is a CUP because it's not.
No, no, no.
No, 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 I was using.
If we do a CUP, we add a bunch of things.
I was using, yeah, I'm, I've been a city clerk, so I'm happy.
All right, great, thank you.
Norm?
No, Stephanie was.
Oh, Stephanie.
So what I understand from the Borough Planning, Scott Huff, is that you don't have to approve or deny a preliminary plat. You can provide recommendations without knowing one or the other.
Right, right. Because it goes to them. We are just recommending to them that they, this, this resolution recommended that they pass it. We don't have to recommend that they pass it, but we can do our. But things will move on. Bruce?
I, I think, Chair, you had mentioned a time issue before, the ninety days. My takeaway from the discussion with DOT is they took that, they took that ninety-day start period as the time it first showed up at the planning team's eight.
At our meeting?
At your meeting.
July six?
As they see in October, I believe that adds up to October, something for passage to move it through. And I, I, I think that's one of the reasons that we tried to accelerate some of these meetings. And frankly, I was asked by DOT is what could be done to help expedite this. And I had been called and everybody's really trying to get it, not my effort. I think it was a lot of different people. Our manager was involved, a lot of, a lot on the phone. But I don't think we should give up the momentum. So however you schedule your meeting to get this thing either yay, nay, or, or whatever, I encourage you to, to do that.
Laura?
Sorry, just one more thing. I, I left this whole process, I actually joined PACAB right in, in two thousand seventeen, right when all of this was going through. And this has left such a bad taste in my mouth for the public process. Because they keep saying all along the way, oh, we've had all these opportunities for comments and we've listened to the public. And if you look at the actual record, you know that's not true. Because all of those comments have said this is not what the community wants and DOT has made no concessions. And I say that only to, I know that we cannot change this project at this point. I think that we all realize that they're going to do what they're going to do. But I think it's still worthwhile in the comments to say, this is not the project that the community wants. I think it's worthwhile for that to continue to be documented throughout this process. I don't think that that's, I don't think it's unnecessary, I don't think it's frivolous. I think that we should continue to state, this is not what the community wants. Like, this is, this, we know it's being shoved down our throats, but it's not what we want. And I think that's, I think there's value in that. So that's all I wanted to say, that if you are going to add sections, you're going to add some narrative to it, I think that that's, that adds value.
Right, we can, we probably make a whereas, but we might not be able to make it the meat and that will therefore be resolved.
Yeah.
Brenda? Do we have enough advertising time to get this on our next regular PMZ meeting?
What's the date?
Six days.
Six days, then? September, September?
It's the September meeting.
Oh, it's September.
Plenty of time, sure. Plenty of time, okay, all right. So I'd be happy to ask for that to be put forward and hopefully that's plenty of time to work a substitution resolution. And I think we've got some major points that we can hopefully put on there. I think it's our resolution for preliminary right-of-way access acquisition replats. Okay?
I'd like one thing.
Yes.
I would just like to appreciate this group. We've had some contentious meetings and many of us were attended and with some real hot heads here in the community. Spun it off. Happy to be the senator Ravel Rouser, but this is a very sophisticated meeting. I really appreciate you sharing it and everyone that brought it together. Hopefully we've made some progress that DOT recognizes that this is a community of strength.
Dwayne, you were mentioned as being a former planner in the Community Development Department. If you could reference those sections of the development code, I'd like to make sure we got that in this resolution going forward to help with the battle for the utilities.
Yeah, yeah, so that, my, my comment had to do with the re-subdivision.
Re-subdivision.
We're throwing around the term subdivision, but a re-subdivision is subject to the same rule.
All right. Yeah, all right. Anything before we close, other than I really appreciate that you did come off a hiatus and come to this meeting, Bob?
Cindy, is there anybody up here that has a comment?
Is there anyone in this Zoom meeting that has anything to add or questions or additions or deletions? No, go ahead. Do we have anyone wishing to speak?
Bob Linville has a statement.
Bob Linville, go ahead, Bob.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Okay, I'm open chair on a Zoom extra. But I just want to say that I, I, I really kind of enjoyed watching the process here as best as I could hear and I could hear very well. But I just want to add that I think the reason we're kind of here, another reason, is because of the political process from Seward's point of view, it's really unworked out for us. It's been a long one, but as Laura said and as Bruce knows, he's been through it, there was never any hard improvement. There was ever anything, but it was just dismissed categorically all of it, all along. And I, I would like to see more political process, I think this is getting a runway, getting a runway that actually works and dykes, we need respect for it. And it actually saves a viable wetland and it works better for a future economy as a transportation option. It's worth moving the political process beyond where it's been all along, because it's never worked that way. It's just been categorically dismissed from the beginning. I think we've been told that we can't do this, we can't build a dyke and call it a runway, even though that's what it is, no matter where you put it. We have dikes all over the valley, we're told we can't do dikes. Well, I know we do, we do dikes, we just haven't been able to combine the, the different politics together to where we can work on this solution to the Seward needs. And I'm going to stay involved and I understand it might just be what it is, but I think it's worth our effort to continue trying to get resolution to the problems that we have. And this alternative they selected does not do it. So that's it, all I got, thank you.
Thanks, Bob. I'm, I'm going to close one more time with the source of government and I'm hoping that the Department of Transportation is listening because I think they had to abide by the Alaska State Constitution as well, that the Constitution, the Article One, Section Two, all political power is inherited in the people. All government originates with the people, is founded upon their will only and is instituted solely for the good of the people as a whole. And with that, I will have the public session to a close.